If we could ask Allie Halgrud from Hope Lutheran Church to come to the podium and open with an invocation, if everyone would please stand. Following the invocation, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Holy One, known by many names and beyond all names, we come before you with gratitude. We thank you for being a God of love who is with us now in this very room. We thank you for making each of us in this room, every person we meet, every citizen of this city and every city, in your own image with dignity and infinite worth. We thank you for the calling you have given every one of us to be good stewards of your creation and to love our neighbors as ourselves. And we thank you tonight for these servants, our mayor, our city manager, our city staff, and our city council members, our first responders, police officers, and firefighters. I give you thanks for the way of service they have chosen to take up on behalf of all of us here. Grant them and us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May they and we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen when it is time to listen. May they and we always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. We pray that we would have the eyes to see how our lives are all connected. We pray for wisdom, for strength, and for courage to do what is right and good for all people of our city. When we put the interests of others above our own, may we act with love for the common good, and may we be good neighbors, recognizing your image in every person here. This we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold good and right and true. Amen.
(Inaudible)
Thank you. Our Mayor Ben Shire is out of town tonight. My name is Scott Kwame. I'm a council member from Ward Two. As acting mayor, I'll be leading our meeting tonight. With that, I'll call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 And Lynn did tell me I was going to be second.[137.22][137.22](Laughter) All right. First item on the agenda then is to approve the agenda, and I will ask our city administrator, Andrew Bramsaf, to give us the rundown on that.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Council members, we do have one minor shift in our agenda this evening. We're going to move Item H2, which is the second reading of the ordinance related to the moratorium of cannabis, up to directly after the public hearing that we're going to hold right away at the beginning of the meeting here, so we can kind of capture that whole discussion all at once.
And, Your Honor, I'd just like to ask a question on proclamations. Obviously, tonight, we have a proclamation declaring the 150th anniversary for the Daily Journal. I'm not sure, ultimately, we have a variety of proclamations coming towards us, and I view the Daily Journal as a commercial business, and I think we need to establish a policy of what we want covered, because, you know, this is a commercial business that's using the city council forum for a proclamation, and if every business in Fergus Falls, you know, comes along with a proclamation, how are we going to handle that? So, I'm willing and prepared to go along with this one tonight, but I think before we, you know, accept proclamations from, you know, non-city official-type business, we should look to put a policy in place.
Thank you. Anthony?
I would agree with Anthony also.
Okay, Al. At some point, I think that it would be appropriate to, at committee of the whole meeting, have this added as an agenda item where we can discuss the process that we'd like to go forward with, and perhaps refer it to city staff or subcommittee.
That would be good. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
I move we approve the agenda.
Thank you, Jim. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Laura. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The agenda is approved. So, opening our meeting tonight, we will have the public hearing on the THC marijuana sales moratorium. It's been discussed at our committee of the whole, and tonight will be the second reading following the hearing, where we will then have an opportunity to vote to extend or not this moratorium. So, I'll now open the public hearing and ask anyone who'd like to speak to step to the podium, state your name, and whether or not you're a resident of Fergus Falls, and then bring your comments. I see we've got one.
Hi, my name's Emily McEwen, and I am a resident of Fergus Falls. Thanks for hearing me. As usual, this is not our first-time meeting. I'm mostly here just for a clarification need. First, I want to thank a couple of you for responding to my email I sent out a few weeks ago after the last committee of the whole meeting, requesting that you consider adding an addendum or amendment to the current language of the proposed moratorium to include language that states until January 2025 or until the state regulatory framework takes effect. And the reason why I'm requesting this is because, as I think a lot of you know, Andrew seems to be pretty familiar with HF100 so far, the state level is prohibiting city municipalities and local governments from outright prohibiting the issuance of this license. I understand that you are hoping and looking to stick in alignment with the state operations, which I'm fully behind, but my concern is that if you adopt and implement this moratorium in a concrete way until January of 2025, that that might create unnecessary delay in the issuance if the state regulations take effect sooner. The January 2025 date is an arbitrary possible date. That's the 18-month mark of how long it may take the State Office of Cannabis Management to be ready to impose the regulations and rules. So, what I think I and some others in the industry are hoping for is for you to add some language that guarantees our right to be issued this license as soon as it becomes ready, and that's really mostly what I'm looking to request of you here before you go forward with this moratorium. If you should, I personally would have no issue probably going forward, as long as, you know, our current hemp operating is underway, which it is, and we appreciate that. The other thing I thought maybe you should consider is using a legal definition instead of recreational THC in the drafted, in the proposed ordinance. That's not a legal definition, and so that's kind of arbitrary. Some people refer to hemp-derived THC as recreational, so, you know, I'm nothing if not thorough and communicative, and I just, that's, I think that's really all I've got. I see no issue as a business and an operator already in the industry with these stipulations, given that you aren't able to issue these licenses anyhow right now. So, I don't, while I don't understand the point of the moratorium, I'm also not going to fight it, because that doesn't negatively impact our business right now. So, I'm, again, asking for you to consider adding language that states until January 2025 or until state regulations take effect, which could be as soon as June of 2024. And what I really don't want to see happen is an unnecessary delay, you know, by way of, let's say, having to, I don't know what the term is, but dissolve a moratorium or eliminate or eradicate or overturn. It just seems like a lot of unnecessary paperwork that we don't, you know, especially when our neighbors around us throughout the state will have the rights to be issued these licenses, and that's kind of the other footing behind my desire. So, that's all I got, and I'm here for questions. I'll be here. Are there any right now?
Thanks, Emily. Would anybody like to ask a specific question? We don't typically
Okay.
...have a dialogue when we're asking for
Sure.
...the public to speak at a hearing, but
Well, thank you for hearing me then, in that regard. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Emily. The hearing is still open. If there's anyone else here who would like to speak, please step to the podium and state Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the members of the council how they'd like to proceed. We've got the option to vote on, as a roll call, on this moratorium, as it was discussed at our committee meeting. If someone would like to bring that forward? Tom?
I first have a question for Andrew.
Okay.
So, you know, I think that the suggestions that Ms. McEwen made are, seem reasonable. If we, where are we at in the process? Where, I mean, could we make those changes and bring it back before the council?
Your Honor, Councilmember Ruffer, your question is where are we at currently in the process?
Yeah, I mean, are we at a point where we could make those changes and then bring it back?
No, and the reason being, Your Honor, Councilmember Ruffer, is that the Office of Cannabis Management, when it's up and running, is directed to give best practices or a framework ordinance that cities should consider. They're going to work directly with the League of Minnesota Cities on that. So, I think Fergus Falls and every other city across the state is just kind of waiting to see what happens and what comes of that, so we're kind of, frankly, we're in a standstill right now. We're not doing anything with it until we hear more guidance from either the league or this newly-created office when it's operational. So, from a timing perspective, we're not ready to bring something back, to have something in place prior to an unknown date, you know, so I couldn't tell you with any certainty when that is going to be or what that timeline looks like.
So, if, you know, and she had also mentioned, you know, the whole recreational THC, is it, just to be certain, the products that are legally sold by these businesses now, they'll still be able to sell them in the same way that they are now without this new ordinance affecting that?
Yeah, Your Honor, Councilmember Ruffer, exactly right. Everything that's happening today will continue to be legal under this moratorium. This is related to licensing going forward that's going to be overseen by the Office of Cannabis Management.
So, what could likely happen is that the Office of Cannabis Management will, you know, work to draft this framework of a permanent ordinance, and then we would probably get notice of that, I would assume, at some time before the office opens and starts issuing those licenses?
Your Honor, Councilmember Ruffer, that's my hope. I hope they give us enough time so it's not, you know, December of '24, and they're licensing the next week, and everybody's scrambling. I think the intent is that everything gets done in an orderly fashion, so everybody's prepared for this to roll out, so.
Okay. Then I would move to vote.
Introduce the resolution?
Yes, that. We just need a roll call.
Call for the vote.
Is there a further comment? No? Lynn, roll call, please.
Joe. Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. I'm sorry, ordinance. The ordinance is approved. The next item on our agenda is the awarding of bids, and we'll call on Brian to present the resolution for PI Public Improvement 5364, the 2023 Mill and Overlay Improvement Project.
Thank you.
Brian Yavro.
Thank you. Your Honor and council members. Yeah, last Tuesday, sealed bids were open for Public Improvement 5364. That's a 2023 Mill and Overlay project. A total of three bids were received. Markley Asphalt and Paving was the apparent low with a base bid amount of $253,442.50. The engineer's estimate for this project was $276,721. I've included the bid abstract along with the project location map. That's also on your screen for the associated streets. Another action I'm requesting, based on the federal bid prices, I'm also requesting authorization to add additional street segments to this project. That would amount to about $63,360. We've done this in the past for state statutes. I don't have specific streets identified, but we're working on Casa Estamia Street right now, trying to look in this general vicinity for this project. So, the total estimated project, if you add the construction base contract, contract increase, which I'm also requesting contingency and in-house engineering design with some soft costs, total estimated project cost of $372,743.10. If acceptable, we look at, we, our annual overlay levy for this is $296,140. For the gap funding, I'm requesting to allocate $76,603 from the 2023 annual seal code levy. With that request, it would be a fully funded project for this year. We anticipate work could be, once we have the pre-con, but it's estimated this work would be completed this fall. So, at this time, I'm requesting resolution awarding construction services contract to Markley Asphalt and Paving and authorization to add additional street segments to the base contract, not to exceed 25% threshold. So, at this time, I'll open up any questions you may have.
Any questions for Brian?
I'll offer, we'll get a go on first.
Thank you, Scott. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Tom Ruffer, thank you for the second.
I second.
All right. Any further comments or questions for Brian? Roll call, please.
Joe. Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Now, we've got a ceremony that we get to do occasionally, and it's kind of a fun thing to do. I'm going to ask Ryan McCow, our fire chief, to step to the podium and introduce five new firefighters, and we're going to have a bit of a ceremony where they're going to get their badges pinned on them from members of their family or friends, and I'm going to step down to help with this.
Good evening, Acting Mayor Kwame, council members, fire department members, family, and friends. We are here this evening to conduct our firefighter badge-pinning ceremony. This event is a milestone illustrating the accomplishments and continued dedication of the five firefighters coming before you this evening. Our Fergus Falls firefighters strive for excellence, commit to learning, are good stewards of public trust, work as a team, and are proud to be a part of our fire department. I am confident that each one receiving their badge this evening is committed to these attributes and more. The badge our firefighters receive this evening is a symbol of the sacrifice our firefighters make to protect the lives and property of those we serve. It also symbolizes the brother and sisterhood of the fire service, one that is supportive of one another. Our firefighters receiving their badge have completed over 250 hours of initial firefighter training, as well as attended regular department training, public relation events, and many hours at the fire station going through the trucks and equipment. They do all this on top of working regular employment elsewhere, as well as being a son, a brother, a spouse or significant other, a dad, a friend, and the list can go on. On behalf of Assistant Chief Neville, Division Chief Lipson, Division Chief Herrig, and myself, we thank you, the firefighters, and your family and friends and their support and your dedication to our department, and congratulate you on receiving your badge this evening. At this time, when I call any, if you can line up by Acting Mayor Kwame, and we will go through the oath of office. So, we'll start firefighter Adam Crombick, he'll be receiving badge number 13. Firefighter Isaiah Gomez, receiving badge number 17. Firefighter Luke Scalikamp, receiving badge number 37. Firefighter Logan Schroeder, receiving badge number 25. And firefighter Colby Palmersheim will be receiving badge number 30. And we also would go give notice to, in the program, each one that the firefighters are employed by, and we truly thank the employers just as much as their family and their friends to allowing them to be firefighters for our community. Mr. Acting Mayor, at this time, if you would like to stand here and give the oath of office.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, men. We truly appreciate this, and in light of the recent happenings in Fargo that have been on the minds and hearts of a lot of folks in this region, I just wanted to give a shout out to those who are willing to put themselves in public service and just thank you for what you're doing and that stepping up to be a part of our city in this way. Do raise your right hand. We'll now have the oath of office. Aye.
Aye.
Do promise to serve and protect all citizens and guests of Fergus Falls
Do promise to serve and protect all citizens and guests of Fergus Falls.
As well as my fellow firefighters
As well as my fellow firefighters.
With pride, honor, integrity, commitment, and teamwork.
Pride, honor, integrity, commitment, and teamwork.
I promise that I will at all times
I promise that I will at all times
conduct myself in a manner that reflects positively on the fire department
Conduct myself in a manner that reflects positively on the fire department
and on the city of Fergus Falls
and on the city of Fergus Falls.
Lastly, I promise to follow the policies
Lastly, I promise to follow the policies
set forth by the department and city
Set forth by the department and city
uphold the laws and constitution of our state and nation
uphold the laws and constitution of our state and nation
and that I will faithfully discharge my duty as a firefighter
and I will faithfully discharge my duty as a firefighter
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
so help me God.
so help me God.
Then we'll also have those that are going to be pinning the badge on their firefighter. They can come forward, and we'll pin their badge on their left chest.
You can hurtle at times. There you go, see?
That's a big asterisk.
Thank you. Good one.
We pin the badge. And a little fun fact, they did have a brochure given to them to cite the oath. I see some of them chose not to.[1319.83][1319.83](Laughter) Maybe I'll redact some of those courageous statements.[1323.83][1323.83](Laughter) Yeah, they're that good. Yes, they are a good group. All right. Members of the council, family, friends, citizens of Fergus Falls, I present to you the newest sworn members of the Fergus Falls Fair.[1375.83][1375.83](Applause) Thank you.
Thank you again, Ryan. The next item on our agenda is a proclamation declaring July 23rd to 29th as a week of celebration of the 150th anniversary of Daily Journal Media and rural local journalism. And to that end, I know that there's at least a couple of folks here from the journal, and I think it would be appropriate to recognize them. I see Heather in the crowd. Have you got some others that you'd like to point out, Heather?
James is hiding over in the corner.
James, over there? Okay. Well, we're hoping this particular bit of news, you know, makes it into the paper in a nice way.[1442.91][1442.91](Laughter) The proclamation celebrating 150 years of Daily Journal Media. Whereas in 1873, the first edition of the Fergus Falls Journal was published by editor Adonorum J. Underwood out of his home, and whereas the Fergus Falls Journal expanded to a daily journal, daily newspaper in a downtown location in 1883, and whereas in 1972, the Daily Journal moved into new headquarters on East Channing Avenue, and whereas in 1985, the publication was sold by the Underwood family to Thompson Newspapers, and whereas the Daily Journal was purchased by Boone Newspapers Incorporated in 1992, and whereas WIC Communications acquired and renamed Daily Journal Media in 2019, and whereas in 2020, Daily Journal Media relocated to the publication, relocated the publication to its present address on North Union Avenue, and whereas Daily Journal Media marks their 150th anniversary by celebrating past and present Ottertail County citizens, volunteers, elected officials, staff, athletes, and all who strive to preserve the history of the town through local journalism, and whereas Daily Journal Media dedicates 2023 as a year of celebration to honor our past, celebrate our present, and embrace our future. Now, therefore, I, Scott Kwame, acting mayor, on behalf of Benjamin Shire, Mayor of the City of Fergus Falls, do hereby proclaim the week of July 23rd through 29th as a week of celebration of the 150th anniversary of Daily Journal Media and local rural journalism, and I urge all citizens to join in this community celebration on July 28th at Speace Riverfront Pavilion from 11:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. Thank you. Heather's, are going to be refreshments and hot dogs and all that kind of fun stuff at the pavilion that day?
Giveaways, live music.
Live music?
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Fantastic. Thank you. Next, we have our open forum. The open forum is a part of our agenda that is for the public. If you have something on your mind and you want to bring before the council something that's not on our agenda and speak to it, now's that opportunity. Anyone wishing to speak at the open forum, we'd ask that you step to the microphone and state your name. Seeing none, we'll close the open forum and move to the consent agenda. Five items on the consent agenda tonight. If anyone on the council would like to remove any of those items, you could let me know at this point. Otherwise, we'll look for a motion to accept consent agenda. So, Brent?
I'll make that.
Thank you, Brent.
I'll second.
Second from Jim Fish. Thank you. Any further comment? This is a motion. Roll call. This is a roll call. Okay, roll call, please.
Joe. Yes.
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 We got that one covered. Thank you. The motion is approved. Resolution is approved. We move to our ordinances and resolutions. The first item, there being the second reading of Ordinance 40, eighth series, the vacation of a portion of Oak Street. This has been discussed at previous meetings and been presented with a first reading. Is there any further comment on this one? Then we'll just need a roll call.
Joe. Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. We've already acted on number two, which was on the THC moratorium, so going to number three. It's the second reading of Ordinance 42, eighth series, amending the chicken ordinance, and as a reminder, this was adding quail to what is currently the chicken ordinance in town. Any further comment or questions? As a second reading, we'll go to a roll call. Thank you.
Joe. Yes.
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 Thank you. That resolution is approved. Our next resolution, we'll be calling on Bill, and I believe you've got a guest with you today too, Bill. This will be a resolution approving and consenting to the issuance of general application bonds regarding the Downtown Riverfront Phase II project. Go ahead, Bill.
Thank you, Your Honor, council. Yep, tonight, we have Doug Green with us from Baker Tilly, our municipal advisor. For those of you that are on the Port Authority, you will hear some of the same information twice tonight, but the Port Authority took bids for bonds today to sell those bonds to finance the project right across the river, the Phase II of the Downtown Riverfront. So, Doug is here tonight to tell you about the results of that sale, how that came out, and then requesting that the city council consents to that issuance. The Port Authority took action to approve the sale of the bonds, and then since the Port Authority falls under the City of Fergus Falls, then you are also asked to consent to that and back those bonds with the full faith and credit of the city. So, I'll call on Doug at this time to go over that issuance. So I'll call on Doug at this time to go over that issuance.
All right.
Doug?
Bill, thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. Again, Doug Green at Baker Tilly, and to those three that also sit on the Port Authority, I do apologize. This will seem like deja vu. As Bill mentioned, we took bids on behalf of the city and the Port Authority this morning at 10 a.m. Had a very good sale. Went out to bid for $2,170,000. It's not the largest bond issue, so I sometimes worry about, you know, how many bids we'll get. But we did. We received five bids. The winning bid, I believe in front of you, I believe you have what we call a bid tabulation there with the five bids there, was by Robert W. Baird, largest underwriter municipal bonds in the state and the region at 3.5%. You see, they were all very close, which tells us that we, you know, did receive fair market value. That TIC is what we call true interest cost. That's the interest rate that we award the bonds. You think of it as a weighted average of all those interest rates that you see, those coupons, which is the interest rate, those 5% and the re-offering yield. That's just simply some flexibility in the pricing that we allow them in their bids. We tell them the money that we need to raise capital for this project, and we give them some flexibility so they can buy the bonds, either premium bonds or discount bonds, whatever they're going to be able to sell to their investors. On the left, the winning bid information, Robert W. Baird, they were the senior manager on this. We can see all those different investment banks, underwriters that participated with them. So hopefully, some of these bonds will make them back into the community. I imagine they will, certainly possibly some regional, local banks. If, looking at the debt service schedules, the amortization schedules you have in front of you, the first page is the sources and uses. It just shows the fact that, you know, we did borrow money for this, but most of the money came from cash on hand. So the borrowing for this project was smaller than it would have been had you had to bond for the whole amount, which is a great thing. And plus, we were able to front load some of those payments because of some of the revenues that are coming in. So the way we call it, what we structure, you see those principal maturities on the amortization page. It's flexibility we have, you know, with bonds, unlike a, you know, regular bank loan. We have that flexibility to change those principal payments in different years and such that we end up with that equal annual levy each year. And it's between about $145,000 and $150,000 per year. So by paying those bonds off, a little, a few more of the bonds off in the first three years, we're actually decreasing our overall interest cost. So again, very, very good sale, given the market a little higher than, you know, what we've been used to over the past 10 years. But, you know, we're all getting used to that with our car loans and house loans and everything else. But still, pretty, pretty good rates going out over 15 years. With each bond issue, we do have to go through the rating process. The market, the buyers want to get a third-party verification from Moody's, Standard &amp; Coors, or the other credit rating agencies. And the city's general rating credit rating was affirmed to AA3. Very high investment-grade credit rating. It looks at, and if you have a chance to get access to the reports, it's your five-minute read. It talks about the city's very good fund balances, very good liquidity that you maintain in your enterprise funds, that you have policies in place and you stick to them. So all those good government, good financial management processes that you're used to, accustomed to, and that, you know, led by Bill, you all stick with on a year, year basis. So that is very good. There's also discussion about those things that you really can't control, the demographic details, the wealth levels, and just the market value. And we're being compared to the rest of the, you know, other cities throughout the country, you know, primarily those in metropolitan areas. It's, it's obviously smaller. It's the same way throughout the, throughout the country. So, you know, you're controlling the things that you can control to maintain that, you know, excellent AA3 credit rating. And that allows us to get, you know, along with the general obligation backing, allows us to get these very competitive five bids, six, five bids, and very competitive interest rates. So with that, like I mentioned, I don't think I've ever had a bond sale where you're actually looking at the project. So that's pretty good. It's real. This is not just, right. We'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Doug? I might ask a question. This is maybe for you, though, Bill. This bond sale isn't by design to pay for the entire project. There's funding for this project that's coming from beyond these bonds, that are from private donations and other sources. Overall, the cost of this project is about double what this is. It's over $5, and so this is like for about 40% or 45% of the project, if I'm averaging it out about right. Is that about right, Bill?
Yep. Nope, that's a good summary. As, as you well know, and I know we'll talk about the fundraising goal a little bit later tonight. But, you know, the goal of $2 million of that, we certainly have collections in hand, more coming in shortly. So we're not bonding for collections that are in or coming soon. And then also, a significant number of city funds going into this as well. The remainder of our COVID dollars, the ARPA funds going into this, as well as other, you know, water sewer storm water funds, some leftover abatement dollars. So we kind of pulled cash from various places to keep the bonding as low as possible.
Very good. I think it's helpful to understand that. In a lot of cases, people will go out and buy something and they'll borrow the whole amount. And, and it might have been easy to assume that that's what was happening here. So. Then the resolution is before us. Do we need someone to introduce that? Please? Who'd like to introduce the resolution?
Anthony?
Anthony, and do we yet need a second for that?
I'll second it.
Brent, thank you. Any further comment or questions for Doug, Bill, or otherwise? Okay, we'll call for the roll call.
Joe.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Next item is a resolution approving a contract with AE2S Nexus for capital planning services and OpDex deployment. And again, we'll hear from Bill Sanmar, our finance director.
All right. Thank you, Your Honor. At the committee of the whole, we did bring this up. I'll recap that a little bit. You know, we looked through the strategic planning process, and we did hear from the public and from you as a council that we want to see more on our capital planning. You know, more out there that we can share with the public as well. And we were approached by AE2S for these services that they provide. And a question I know that came up at the committee was, what are some other cities that are using this? So we did look into that. And so we certainly talked about Fargo being quite a large city using this, Mandan, Grand Forks, and Bozeman. So those are ones that are currently getting implemented. You know, populations from 258,000 down to Mandan at the smallest of 24,000. Certainly, you'll notice that is west of us. They are working more in North South Dakota and Montana. But moving their presence with this facet of their business more into Minnesota. There are more Minnesota cities that are looking at doing exactly what we're proposing here tonight. They just, they haven't signed the contract yet either. But certainly, these other cities are ones that it is being rolled out with and being worked with. And then you also talked about, what would the public see? What would you see for this? Because this tool will be mostly used internally to build projects. So we'll do our capital planning through this process. Could lay that out in a map function. So if you look, here's all the street section of the, of the capital planning. Then you can lay that out on the map so that we could bring that to council and show you where on the map that's, that's going to be showing up. Then you'll also use it to project your revenue sources, whether it be for the water sewer, stormwater utilities, or financings relating to that. So you could put in your grant funding, your utility funding, then property tax funding. And then also show how that, does that impact those individual funds? So you could track fund balances out over the years. So it's, it's a capital planning and long-term financial planning tool as well. So then I asked, what is something that we would show the public? So we would basically take PDFs. So we wouldn't have the live document on the website so that the public could access that and, and change things on there. But you could take PDFs and export them to our website so you could have, have that available. And that's what we have on the screen here. Just certainly, and Leila, do you want to just page down for me? So the first one, go back up a little bit, is, it'll be map-based. You know, that's just a screenshot of a map. This is from AE2S, an example that they have as kind of for a demo. Then we go down a little bit. And here, we show, and I'm going to pull open mine because I'm not going to read that screen too good from here. Just being honest. So what we're looking at up here then is, you know, a project summary. So the top section, property and project information table says what the cost is, estimated year of start, the duration, the construction cost, and then the funding packages, you know, that center section, where's the funding coming from? And then the funding plan down below, by year, what's that, you know? What's the funding plan by year, broke down by sources, coming over to a total? So let's scroll down to the next one. You can show that in graphic form as well. This one is showing, you know, a grant and a loan, 50/50, just showing how that would go out over the three years. Then the next one would start showing, now when we tie debt service schedules to that funding, you have a loan, well, then you need to pay that back over, say, 15 years, like what we just did for the bonds across the river here for that project. Then what are the cash, you know, funding needed? So you could see that in a visual graph coming out over the years. And then on to the next one. Then kinds of brings, brings us to a summary where it shows like the dark blue dotted line being the balance of the loan. You can see the cash requirements from the prior slide in the blue, the principal going down, the balance of the loan, the principal payments going up, interest going down, to show those impacts. So it's just a very simple example of what something could look like. Again, this was just received at PDF from AE2S. So nothing, this relates nothing to Fergus Falls, it's just as, as an example. And then the last one here is, if you like tables, then you can see this all in a table format as well. The annual cash needs that would be required. So you can see as you look at doing capital planning, it's trying to get all this, our arms around the whole thing so we can see the big picture and then project that big picture to you as a council and to the public. So our question for you tonight is, is this something you're interested? Would you like to go forward with this at this time? That's why we're here tonight, as I'm showing you an option. Currently, we use Planet, which is more of, just a database. A lot of cities do use that. It's a very common tool we've used for years. It doesn't come with a lot of the mapping and the, you know, the charts and graphs so much. We use it more internally. You'll see it at the last section of our budget document. We do attach that to that. It's about $30,000 to implement this. And we did talk about that at the committee of the whole. We would divide that up over the enterprise funds, the equipment fund, and our permanent improvement revolving fund. And then ongoing would be about $1,500 a year annual hosting fee as this would be hosted in the cloud by AE2S. That's very similar to the fees we pay now. So the difference being the implementation fee of having AE2S help us build this out, so. Andrew, am I missing anything? Clara, we went through a demo today again.
Yeah, just one further clarification on what could be forward-facing. This software does give us the ability to pull off GIS layers of information. So that could then be put into a map form that could be interactive, and we could connect then the PDFs that the software can, can produce into that map so people could click through and see where projects are happening, and then they could see what the funding mechanisms are, things like that. So it does give us options there as well.
Yeah. Yeah, so you could build a lot of this capital data in this OpDex, and then you could export that all to the GIS so then it would get uploaded into our GIS system that way too, so.
Any comments or questions for Bill?
I guess I.
Anthony?
I've got.
Okay, we'll go with Anthony first.
Okay. Mine was as much, you know, when Neville retired a couple of weeks ago, you, you mentioned how integral he was in keeping the software of the city going. And I wonder, before we embark on like one piece of, of new software, whether we shouldn't have a comprehensive review of all of our software so that, you know, we, we have a, a system that embodies more than just project planning. But, you know, and so the whole system could be integrated. And, you know, because this, this, this seems like it's a standalone piece of software. And, and, you know, my concern is that we do this, then you get locked into this piece, and like everything, we've invested in it. And then all of a sudden, you know, we, we need new accounting software, or we need new, some other softwares. And none of these things talk to each other. And I, I just wonder if before we embark on spending $30,000 here, we shouldn't take a more holistic approach and view of what other software is likely to want to be upgraded in the, in the near future. That'd be my only kind of comment.
You bring up a very valid point because we do, we will need to look at technology citywide. So that is a good argument to that point of looking into that. I don't have an answer for you right, but it's a good point, and it's something, yeah, that we should think about.
Oh. I guess my comment is pretty much the same. That's what I was going to say also. And, you know, as far as a, a new software that, you know, Mr. Neville had always kind of piecemealed things together to make things work. You know, instead of us spending $30,000 right now, you know, what is that? I don't know what software would cost to run what needs to be run that he worked on. But, you know, it might be $150,000. And I just don't want to see $30,000 go away when we really need something else that might be, do this in the long run if you find it down the road a little bit. You know, and I'm looking too with those cities that you gave, you know, most of those, like you said, they're all out west. It's, it's, it's North Dakota. And it, we have a hard time to compete with North Dakota, Minnesota does. And I think we all know that. But, and that was another point that I wanted to make was, you know, does that, is that going to talk to other software, other computers? You know, that's what, that's what I'm majorly concerned about because I don't want us to spend money and then re-buy it again or with a program that comes with something else.
Yeah, it definitely, we know it can export data. We, we have definitely learned that it won't be linked to our others. I mean, it's definitely an export, so. Yeah.
Any other comments? Jim, where are you? Looks like you were trying to.
I got a comment.
No, I was, I was adjusting my hearing. Go ahead.
So through this election process, we went through here about, you know, eight months ago now. The biggest thing was communication about where our funds are going for our streets, and that's where this is pretty much going to be. And I agree that if we can find something else that will integrate with something else, but this is going to be kind of a standalone piece for us as council persons to utilize when we're out having dinner, not here, and not calling Bill or calling Brian or, or Andrew. And so it's, I think it's a good idea, but I, I think we can put it on hold if we have to, to get a little research on it. But I think we need to come back and look at it and make sure that we can use it. Because I think it'd be a great thing for all of us. I mean, it's, if we're having discussion someplace and you just bring it up on your phone, say, here you go. Right now, we can't do that, so.
I mean, I definitely think it's a great tool. We were so impressed looking at it. So I'm confident in the tool. Now, you bring about the software. That is something we're going to need to look at. You know, we just updated our mainframe. So certainly, our mainframe is good for the next three to four years. But you bring up valid points that we need to be looking at our overall technology. That is a reality, so.
And just another thing, that money's going to come from three different parts of our city, which is a good thing after going through this budget process that we're going through right now. It's mind-boggling. But it's, it's a good thing, so that's a good place. It's not like we're dumping $30,000 in one, one place. So I think it's, I'll, I'll agree. We'll go look at it, but I just, I think we've got to come back to it and, and really look hard at it because it's going to be a great tool for us.
So maybe we just put it on hold for now? I'm looking at Andrew.
No one has offered the resolution.
No one's offered a resolution.
We haven't even had a chance to. We wouldn't be having to even vote on it if it just doesn't get any rights from this point.
You wouldn't even have to vote right now.
I'm sorry. Al, did you have one other comment?
I guess what I wanted to say too is I think, you know, it's great to have information. It really is. It really is, and communication. The other thing, too, sometimes we forget about is we've got department heads throughout the city, you know, and I know that they're busy, but, you know, that's where kind of accountability falls on, too, is, hey, you know, what's going on here? What are we going to do here? And, you know, that's going to, that would be, you know, people we need to ask, or have maybe a detailed report if we need to. And that's kind of where I'm at with it, Bill. Thank you.
Nope, and definitely with accountability, I mean, we as your department heads, we need to do this job for you either way. With the tools we currently have or this, our goal was just if we could make it better. So that's, but yes, it's up to us to do this, and we do do this, so.
Laura?
I just want to say that I do think it's a great tool. I think the transparency of it is what a lot of us have been looking for, but I do agree, let's see what we need to do moving forward and then come back to this.
So Bill, it sounds like there's enough questions that we would just like a little more information. We'd like to fill in the blanks on some of these questions a little bit. And maybe Tyler with AE2S can help us to answer those questions.
Yep, and what we'll do is, as a staff group, we'll get together with our technology people in-house, so we look at more of that long range of the major systems. And we'll certainly talk, I know a tax levy about this, too, because part of that process, if we have major dollars to spend there, that needs to come into the capital improvement planning process as well. So I'm hearing you loud and clear, and that's the route we'll go. So thanks for hearing me out on it, though, and it's a good discussion to have, so.
I think it's likely, then, this will come back at a committee of the whole meeting or further presentation.
And we won't say just when, but sometime in the future. I mean, it probably won't be next week, because it'll take a little bit longer to think through our full technology outlook over the next maybe four to five years, but we'll look at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
And Your Honor, if I may, I just want to thank the staff for the time that you've put into this, and, you know, you're balancing that need for, you know, the, as much transparency as we can get versus how it's going to work with our existing system to enter into our budget. So, yeah, thanks for putting time into it.
Bill, Scott, can I? Could we have Dan come to a committee of the whole? I know he's never done that, but I mean, could you have him come and explain it in his words, maybe?
Of the whole system?
Of, no, when it comes down to what we can use to integrate this, how this could be integrated, or how, what we're going to do with something else, instead of having you come and you and Andrew could talk to him. But I mean, it's just something, Dan's very, I was on the phone with him last week, saved my butt a lot, so. He's really good.
Absolutely.
For those who wouldn't know who Dan is, Dan's our IT.
Director.
Director, very good. And again, as Tom mentioned, thanks to the staff, I think in many ways you were clearly responding to the public's request for this kind of a response. You know, they're asking these kinds of questions, how can we find out this information? And this is a way to be addressing those questions and bringing something in a positive way forward, and so we appreciate that. And we'll look forward to furthering this discussion and process.
Sounds good.
Got one more resolution to discuss and move on tonight, and that's a resolution authorizing change order number two for PI 9767 Phase Two of the downtown riverfront project. Wait a minute. What did we just do? Yeah, that's right.
Grant.
We talked about it with, yeah, that's right. So thank you. We've got Grant here from Bolton and Mankato.
Yeah, Your Honor, council members, yeah, we discussed this last committee of the whole meeting, just here to answer a few questions regarding project schedule as well as budget. So last week, Comstock Construction, the prime contractor, submitted an updated schedule, given how the project has gone thus far. And further schedule, they're still hitting all the major milestone and final completion dates outlined in the project specifications and contract. So those milestones, one this fall, October 20th of 2023, were all were completed, except for the top layer of the dominoes pavement in the parking lot, permanent striping, splash pad operations. The splash pad will be installed, it just won't be operational at that point, and then landscape plantings. Next spring, by May 20th of 2024, so that's right before Memorial Day, the splash pad will be filled, tested, and operational, landscaping completed, top lift of the dominoes pavement, and final striping will be complete. And then final completion is August 2nd of 2024, and so that will be any outstanding punch list items, things of that nature will be taken care, kind of from that May 20th to August 2nd date. Regarding budget, the total project construction budget is $4,011,221.46, which includes a 10% construction contingency. So through June 16th, that was our last pay application that was approved. We've spent 5% of the construction contract so far, so we're just kind of getting into it. There'll be another payout that comes here in the next couple of weeks. We had a cutoff last Friday, it just hasn't been processed yet. So given our experience on projects of similar size and scope, we don't envision at all going past this construction budget, given the information we have today. And one other comment, just regarding some of the changes outlined here in change order two, specifically the limestone block seating wall revision, which is the highest dollar amount of all the changes. That was because of that MDH requirement that no limestone could be allowed in close proximity. And so just wanted to highlight that. Any questions, comments for me?
I've got a question from Al.
I have a question.
Yep.
It goes to the limestone.
Yep.
Whose job is it that that wasn't caught?
So again, as we talked about last week, MDH, they made a change. It wasn't part of their pool code yet, but they made a change to not allow limestone because it adversely affected the chemistry. So we had a aquatic design consultant who designed the splash pad area, and we worked in conjunction with him for all the site scapes. This was not a part of their code at this point, but when we had submitted our permit and heard a response back from MDH, they, in their response, said no soft stone, which a limestone is a soft stone, will be allowed in direct contact with the splash pad water.
And I, since it's Minnesota Department of Health, I guess my other question is this, do you understand that concrete is 62% to 65% limestone?
It's on their approved list for materials to use, and so we've built a fair amount of splash pads and haven't seen, I guess, adverse effects from that.
Is that limestone already purchased?
The blocks, I would have to check. I would imagine not at this point. We could change order, that's part of the change orders, is, part of the change order was reducing the amount of limestone that would be incorporated into the project.
Right, and if you could find out if that's already been purchased, because what are we going to do with it then?
I mean, it would, yeah, it would not be, it's not been purchased, no. I've talked to the contractor, yeah, it's not been purchased. It's not, you don't, not own the limestone at this point.
Any other comments or questions for Grant? As I understand it, the way it's described is a lined concrete form, so it's like the stamped concrete or something. It's not just going to be like an ordinary sidewalk. It's going to have some texture to it that'll look.
Yes, the multi-river or multi-level water feature will have that stamped effect. The stairways coming down will just be typical stairways. It won't have a stamped effect on that, because that's an ADA requirement that it would have to be smooth. So the water feature coming down will have that stamped effect to mimic the look of limestone.
I have a question.
And Laura?
I just want to go back. You had made a comment about this part two here, the limestone seat wall.
Mm-hmm.
That that was a material change?
Correct.
It's not a, was it always going to be stairs there?
So it's called a seat wall, it'd be 18-inch, it's kind of, we wouldn't call it a stairway, but it'd be 18-inch steps coming down. So we call it like a seat wall where people could kind of sit on, and so that's what the intention was for the initial design.
So the design didn't change, it's just a material change for you?
Literally, yes, and then it'll be, it'll be more like stair steps, so it'll be closer to six-inch treads, like a normal stairway compared to 18-inch that a, the limestone block seat wall would have been.
I think when you were visiting about this earlier, there was some question about the safety of that, too, and going to just ordinary, for lack of a better term, ordinary stairs, it's maybe a safer arrangement than those 18-inch steps, sort of like a bleachers that people could easily tumble.
Correct.
Want to comment, Al?
Yeah, so with this change order, and I'm kind of with Anthony, I don't like any kind of change orders, and I've done enough construction in my life to know that they cost a lot of money, and there's usually an error, usually, associated with a change order. But why is that $71,000 more than an actual piece of stone? Is it the labor, or what is this?
So it's a, so these, the full $71,000 is not just for the block seat wall revision as well as the splash pad revision. There's more, or sorry, the river feature revision. So there's more labor when you do the river feature with doing the form liner, because they actually have to put in these forms that have kind of some, there's just more labor intensive there. And then also with the stairway, we had to change some of the locations of the piles that go underneath as well to support the stairway. So there were some revisions there as well. And we looked at the, we looked at their costs, and there was a stairway already scheduled to be installed right next to the bathroom. This stairway was very similar priced compared to that stairway right next to the bathroom. That was already incorporated into the project.
And that was already budgeted in there, so that's fine. You know, that's not a change order.
Yep.
So that has no relevance, in my opinion. The other thing, too, is what was commented, as we look out here, it's real, it's very real. The other thing that's very real is the money on this change order. This is taxpayer dollar, too. You know, this has to come from someplace. I know that there's probably money built into it, but why should we use it when we just started this? We don't know what's going to happen next. There could be a lot of other change orders coming up. Just to put it in perspective, you guys, here it is, the 2023 annual seal coat levy for roads was $76,000. Well, that's to fix our roads, you know, and we're talking 71, or $70,000 for a simple change order over here. That, I'm trying to compare it, you know, that money has got to come from someplace. And if we can save money, I know it's a contractor and it's a designer to make money, but it's also a city is to try to save money for the taxpayer. And, you know, if you, if something can't be afforded, then what do we do? You know, is there another option here? That's, I mean, this is the only option that's been brought forward.
Because in Minnesota, I mean, it'd be a matter of, yeah, the fact that the Minnesota Department of Health is mandating that you use that, I don't see any other way around it.
What I'm just saying is, I know that if you can't do anything with the Minnesota Department of Health, and I know how they work, too, but why isn't there another option that could be tried? Or where's the option that we could save $70,000 on something else? If there's, if there's some fudge built into that, there's, you know, 10% built in there.
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly go back to the drawing board and see on this, but, I mean, it'd be a matter of maybe not having the river feature push water through, and I guess in my opinion, that's a pretty pivotal piece to this project.
Grant, I think at this point, we'll just see if there's someone that would like to put this resolution on the table.
I will offer it, Your Honor.
Offered by Jim.
Second.
Second by Tom. As far as any conversation regarding other options or whatnot, that really wasn't in the scope of what you were asked to do, and I think that as Brian has presented these things for us in the past, there was always a contingency to allow for unforeseen things. And I think, given the news that you brought for the Minnesota Department of Health changing the rules kind of mid-project on us, I think it qualifies as an unforeseen situation. So any further comment, otherwise we'll call for the vote on this.
Yeah, I'll just thank you for coming and explaining it to us and taking the time.
Yeah, no problem.
Roll call, please.
Joe?
No.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Freymeier?
No.
Thompson?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
No.
Fish?
Yes. Resolution is approved. Thank you. And as a tag along to this topic, we have the pleasure of someone bringing us some good news tonight, who's in the audience. Tasha Rolfs has been behind this with both arms waving in the air for some time, and we really appreciate the work that she's done. And Tasha's here tonight to bring us an update on the private fundraising and that aspect of this, of this project.
Yes, hello, good evening. Just want to say to Grant as well, thank you for all of your work on this. I have tabled at Summerfest now, at Top Move Groove, and the comments from everyone is so incredibly positive. And you standing up here and defending this project and defending the river feature, which is one of my favorite parts of it, is so pivotal, what everyone says, the claim that they say when they hear about the splash pad, they say, "It's about time." And then there's another, Jean can speak to this, she's been at all these events, too. And then there's the rendering of the Aquatic Center, and then, again, you hear them say, "It's about time." And if I had a dollar for every time I heard literally that phrase, I'd be done fundraising. Bye now. People are so ecstatic for these projects, and we really appreciate all of your hard work, and thank you to all of you for being on board and supporting this as well. It's been a really incredible, watching people's reactions. And if Peggy was, Peggy's on vacation, Peggy Underwood, the co-chair of our fundraising committee, she also says, she's like, "I didn't know how many young families there were in Fergus," is what Peggy would be saying right now. So it has been really fun to get to know a lot of people and to follow up with some of our really philanthropic individuals and businesses around town. We do know that what we do inside these council chambers does matter in terms of when we are faced to go out and ask individuals to help support this project. And so we appreciate all of you creating really positive relationships and positive comments, and a positive vibe surrounding all things Fergus Falls, because then it depends on whether or not these businesses want to put their money into projects like this. And as we have been tasked to raise a million privately, it does matter what businesses are feeling right now. And to get this project done, so the onus isn't put back on the city, it does matter what type of vibe we're putting out there. So thank you for staying really positive, creating good relationships, and good communication with all of those in this community, as we are trying to be the fundraisers of this. So, so far, our committee started fundraising about January, February timeline, and thus far, we have received $80,421. But wait, there's more. I consider that $80,000 a part of the million that we are in charge of, as the Vaden Trust is covering that second million bill, I would think you would, yes. So $80,421 has been collected, but we have very strong commitments and checks waiting in the wings on $709,621. So $709,621 plus the $80,421 that's collected leaves us, so far out of the million that we have been tasked with, we have had committed and received $790,042, leaving us with $209,958, $209,958 left. Very soon, as you know, if you have fundraised before, this is a very, very careful process. There is a lot of follow-up, there are a lot of meetings, there's a lot of emails, there's a lot of phone calls, there's a lot of trust that people are putting in us. And we are awaiting approximately $80,000 to $122,000, that is for sure. There's like a big $40,000 gap in there, right? $80,000 to $122,000, that is a for sure happening, but they just haven't locked their number in yet. So approximately, we have about $88,000 to $100,000 that we are working on currently, and that $100,000 will be completed by year's end.
Well done. Thank you. Very good news.
And I'd also like to say that Mayor Ben has played a pivotal role in some of these huge amounts that have come in, and so thankful that we have such a strong mayor that has put up relationships in this community and people who are donating upwards of $500,000 from different entities because of the relationship that he has had with a lot of people. So we are very lucky to have those strong relationships, building, building strong amenities, so we can keep our workforce and city strong. Any questions?
Thank you, Tasha.
Here, here. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Pretty encouraging to see what you've been able to do in less than, what is it? Pretty encouraging to see what you've been able to do in less than, what is it, nine months, eight months? That's really remarkable. Thank you.
We're not surprised.
You're not surprised, Tom? You've seen interaction, thank you. Presentation of claims tonight for $22,269,368.17. If anyone has any questions, we'll ask Bill to address them.
I'll offer the resolution. Pay the bills.
Offered by Jim. Second by Tom. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Joe? Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Freymeyer?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
The resolution is approved. Thank you. We don't have any board, committee, or department reports or reports from staff or administrative officers beyond what we've already been hearing tonight, no old or unfinished business to take up at this time or that I'm aware of. For announcements, there's a few things that we can mention. I believe, Al, you wanted to make note of something?
Yeah, there's a town hall meeting this Wednesday, the 19th, at the Public Library from 6:30 to 8:00. Thank you.
Thank you. I can make one comment. Earlier today, people may or may not have noticed out on Lake Alice, a fellow was out there with a kayak and moving some things around, and that fellow was George Klug from Water Quality 3D. And this process started some months ago, and we had a little dock that was installed up on the northeast corner, and underneath that dock is the Water Quality 3D equipment that is currently running 24/7. And the little buoy that George dropped in the lake out in the middle has sensors that are going to be measuring oxygen levels and other things at the top and at the bottom of the water to just see if this equipment is doing what they hope it's doing. And it's got some way of communicating to the internet so they can pull reports and whatnot, the water quality, as we hope to see it improving through the summer. Again, it's a two-year pilot project. We'd love to see some change in the water yet this summer. It might take longer before we see something or not, it's a, after all, a test. But I thought I would just mention that as people might have been wondering what was going on out there today. We'll have a work session on August 2nd. Our next committee of the whole meeting is going to be dedicated strictly to streets and funding for capital improvement projects, and so we won't have, as far as I know, any additional agenda items on that particular meeting. And following that, our next work session will be on August 7th, where we'll be discussing THC and marijuana licensing. And then that same day will be our next council meeting at 5:30 PM.